It is resolved that the Board of Education uphold the determination of the superintendent with regard to the suspension of a particular student in its entirety. May I have a motion, please?
One.
May I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Agreed.
Knows, abstains?
Abstain.
Resolution passes.
Who abstained?
Next, we have public comment. Mr. Man will be kind enough to explain the policy. We've set aside 10 minutes for public comment.
All right.
Here we go.
So, just as a course of reiterating the intent of the policy itself, so the Board encourages public participation in all matters at these meetings. You're given 10 minutes at the beginning of the meeting and 10 minutes at the end of the meeting. The issue is brief. Speakers may comment on any school-related matter during the open session. Speakers presenting complaints must have first gone through established complaint procedures, and the Board reserves the right to delay action for later meetings. The Board will not permit public session discussion involving individual district personnel or students. First and foremost, just as a reminder that these board meetings are meetings of the Board, held in public, they're not meetings with the public. But the public sessions are a great place to get feedback from the community if you haven't otherwise already done so by either through district clerk or by email or cellphone. So it's encouraged to get feedback. We just want to make sure that there's decorum for privacy.
Comment number, did you call me number three?
Yeah.
Duly noted.
So we want to make sure that we don't talk about specific people, good or bad, we just cannot address specific personnel, students, anyone. During rehearsals, speakers to conduct themselves in civil manner, obscene language, libelous statements, threats of violence, statements advocating racial, religious, or other forms of prejudice will not be tolerated. So, just about behavior. And the President is responsible for orderly conduct. I think that kind of summarizes the intent.
I just wanted to add a comment. There's no visual or audio of Pauline Stone on the computer, so is represented that she was going to be part of this meeting?
Well, I think they're trying to, Andy, Gary's working on it. Okay. This is the record that Mr. Lambert is trying to make sure that she was on earlier.
Yes, she was.
She has gone off, and now he's trying to recover the video and audio.
So technically, she is in attendance.
No, she's not. She's not.
She has, attendance has been taken. She was here.
She was here.
All right. So we've set aside 10 minutes for public comment. If anyone would like to approach the Board at this time, you're welcome to do so. Please step forward and state your name, but please remember, we talk about concepts, not people, or students, or faculty. Thank you.
Can I add a question? Are Board members district personnel or students?
We do not talk about specific people in public sessions.
Because of specific people.
Okay.
Since I'm an absolute novice to your proceedings, and I'm going to probably run all over them, where do you stand normally? Over here at the podium, or?
Yeah.
The microphone.
All right, okay. So my name is Douglas Seaman. I'm a member of the community, and I'm not here for any individual or student. I'm here because my son had come home and had taken what was called a Clinton County...
Okay, hold on one second. You're referring to a specific student?
Okay, well, actually, it's a school thing. So, Clinton County, New York, 2018 PNA survey.
So have you talked to the teacher or principal about this?
Well, I spoke to the middle school principal, very briefly, very nice lady. She provided me some information in regards to what this was. I thought that this would be a question that I would be able to ask the school board, just some various questions in regards to this survey, as in who the third party that was taking this, where the raw data was going, who was collecting the raw data, who was overseeing this, what various third parties are there, and I just wanted to read one of the, well, actually, four of the things that is stated straight out of the game.
So...
I could be wrong.
Okay.
But I know I wouldn't be wrong in saying that if you sat down with the principal and went through these questions, that she would absolutely, and in accordance with policy, do her level best to answer them on the spot, when she couldn't answer on the spot, she would research and find the answer for you, and if you weren't satisfied at that point, then you could reduce your concerns and writing to me, and I'd do my level best to give you any information that is different, that surfaces.
Okay.
And then I would inform the Board. I think it's, I think the way the policy reads it, I would inform the Board as needed. So, I'm not trying to dissuade you, but I would know that the Board wouldn't be familiar to a middle school survey. I'm just sorry.
Well, and no, and the reason why I'm asking is, it wasn't a survey in which the school itself had completed it. I mean, again, it's a third party, so I was just wondering if the Board was aware of the Clinton County, New York, 2018 PNA survey?
We do not, we are, I am not aware of it. I don't have a student in middle school, so...
And I got no problem, and understand, and I apologize that if I'm doing anything wrong procedurally, because this is something which I normally, normally I don't want to come here. Normally, I'm going to allow you guys to do what you do.
And just so you know for future reference, public comment, as you make a comment, we absorb all of your lovely information.
So no Q and A?
We usually don't usually have, no, it's not usually a discussion. What we would do is refer you back to your building principal, and then we would follow the steps.
Since your eyes, your eyes and your eyes have pointed behind me directly, so I'm thinking, the nice lady that is in the front row all the way.
Smiling beautifully.
Okay, so I haven't stepped in it too deeply. All right. So, so basically, and I just want to make sure I'm clear, you would like me to have a conversation more so with her first, and then if I have any more concerns to come to you, because I'm coming to you guys anyways. I just, so this is my public comment. I have an issue with consent of a minor on doing a third-party survey.
I'm trying to address that. So, let me address the Board, and maybe the information will come out that way. As part of policies through New York State School Boards Association, we have many years been getting a lot of modifications to our policies that initially became a question with testing and data going out to third parties, right? And so, a lot of that information was modified so that no names of any students went out, just some random numbers associated with students only don't hear. So, our policy manual does cover quite a bit...
Hello, Gary.
...of protection, that any information that we're gathering from students is not given out in any way with specific detailed information about family, students' names, anything like that. If there's anything gathered and sent to the state or somewhere, we have policy that makes sure that we do not send out detailed information.
And I'm glad you said that, and the other reason why is that, from my understanding, these are not written, as in like how when we went to school where it would be a bubble sheet, pen, number two pencil, it is actually taken by a laptop. The laptop has a very distinctive, unique IP address, and that would be a question also too, that I would have, is are you guys using VPN? Because if you're not, every single individual is being categorized, and that information is being obtained for individuals. And I was under the assumption by New York State rules that you're not supposed to do that. But, again, I apologize. I overstepped a few norms and...
Good question. Good question. I think we'll take a look here.
Let me probably point you in the direction of our 21st century learning folks as well, bring up some good questions.
Okay.
Do you want to protect your child and every child's...
Oh, absolutely. And look, and this is not about stepping on anybody or trying to slap wrists. I just was a little alarmed with, usually, it's the, you know, somebody tucks somebody's hair, somebody pushed somebody down the hall, you know, and then when I heard surveys, surveys leading to studies and research, I was like, whoa, pump the brakes, what's going on, you know? All right, I'll go back to the principal after the meeting. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the Board at this time? All right. Seeing that we have no one stepping forward, we'd like to move on to presentations. Our first presentation is the NEA grant. Our presenter will be Colleen McDonald, grant coordinator. Hi.
Yes, I don't know. I don't work here. I'm just, I'm just at meetings.
Okay. I don't usually stand behind a mic because, as a 32-year retired educator, I have a teacher voice, and when I stand behind a mic, it often gets unbearably loud. So, thank you, and I really appreciate you welcoming me here tonight. My name's Colleen McDonald. I'm a nationally board-certified teacher, and as I just told you, I retired several years ago after a 32-year career in education. I've taught special education, I've been an administrator, I've been a middle school principal, and then I went back to the classroom as an English Language Arts teacher. So it was very circuitous, and I got to see all the different corners of the education world. Before I moved to Cambridge, I actually sat in one of your seats for three years in my hometown. So, having had this perspective, one of the things several years ago, about five or six years ago, we looked at was teacher preparation and the need to really enhance what we were seeing in the southern end of the county in terms of our new teachers and the preparation. So it started through an STLE grant, and we were working with the Queensberry campus, and we actually extended our student teaching in Cambridge so that it wasn't two eight-week sessions, it was one 16-week placement, and I'll talk about that in a minute. But I'm sure you've all heard about the teacher shortage, and in the next decade, it's estimated that across the country, we're going to be hiring between 1.5 million and 1.6 million new teachers. So that's one of the reasons this is really important to our schools. I also have here with me tonight Sarah Hackett, who is our program liaison. She's a faculty at SUNY Plattsburgh. I'm sure most of you know her. She's developed an incredible partnership with Beakman Town. Sarah, do you want to give them a wave? So, we started, whoops, this rocker, here we go. All right, I got it, Gary.
No problem.
As you can see, those are all our partners that we started with originally, and we brought Beakman Town on last year, which we were super happy to do. This originally was a grant, the NEA is the National Education Association, they have a fund called the Great Public School Fund, and we were able to secure a grant from them for three years. This is the end of our second year, we're heading into our third year. So, what we looked at was, what are we trying to solve? What do we want to do during this preparation program? And there's three main problems right now that most school districts are facing, and that's recruitment of new teachers, retention of new teachers, retention of good teachers, right, even your mid- or late-career teachers, and the perception of teaching. We all have a perception of teaching, and often, it's not, it doesn't necessarily mesh with the reality of teaching. We all cornered our stuffed animals or our little brothers and sisters when we were young, and we played teacher. We've taught our own children maybe how to ride a bike. But while those things are true, juggling 15, 20, 25, 30 students in a classroom with 15, 20, 25, or 30 various learning needs, and having content that you need to get through is a different act of professionalism than what we usually think about when we think about teaching. So we wanted to look at that mismatch. The research is very clear that effective teaching is the number-one key factor in student learning, followed closely by building leadership, and that teacher candidates too often aren't ready for like the complexity of teaching. After our residents, our first cohort, were in the field for the first couple of weeks, and I stopped in and interviewed them and said, "So, where's the rubber meat in the road for you? Your thoughts about teaching and what it really is?" And one of the elementary residents looked at me and said, "Oh my God, I never realized that teachers have to do everything like bus lists and make sure kids have their lunches or lunch money, or their coats, or their boots, or like all the other things that we do in the mode of teaching." So this is our traditional model. The traditional model of student teaching actually started in the 1950s. It was two seven- or eight-week placements, and that totals 560 hours. So, basically, what would happen is the college would approach a school and ask for volunteer teachers to accept student teachers. I've taken many in my lifetime, and there was little contextual connection to what they were learning in their academic program and what the school district necessarily needed or was doing on the ground. Programs that they were offering, district priorities, those different things. So the problem that we found with this model is that New York State, as you know, has seven really good teaching standards that teachers are held accountable to, and in two seven- or eight-week placements, it's really difficult to be able to not only like to wrap your arms around those seven standards. So, knowledge of, knowing your students is the first standard. If you're only in a class, in a new school, in a new building, with, suppose you're a middle school English teacher, and you have 100 kids that are going through your classroom, knowing those students well in seven weeks is a challenge, and a really difficult one. So, we looked at that. Charlotte Danielson once said that teaching is a complex act, and estimated that teachers make more than 3,000 non-trivial decisions a day. They are second only to emergency room, trauma unit physicians. So we wanted to prepare classroom-ready teachers. This is what our continuum looks like. You can tell it's a little bit more complicated. I'm a total color person, so, and a visual person, so I apologize if anyone has trouble with colors. The orange is the district, the gray is traditionally the higher ed with the master's program. So what we've done is we've layered this experience to make it much richer and deeper and longer. The resident starts in the program, and they're there for two years as opposed to seven or eight weeks. That's increased the number of hours directly with students to 2,800, which is a 500% increase. What does the Classroom Academy provide? Well, we can't, in all seriousness, if we want to be equitable and attract residents who want to be teachers and not just kids who can afford to have their parents like support them while they volunteer for two years, we had to offer a living stipend. So we offer our residents $22,000 a year for participating in the program, and they're full-time in the classroom for those two years. They're immersed from day one in a setting. We have the potential teachers interview them, and they're matched because it's also not a short-term program. This is a professional relationship that we want to build and last. So they're matched with their lead teacher, and they learn and practice and develop the knowledge and skills that the college requires in their great rigorous program, but they do it in the context where they might actually teach, in school communities. So what that does is it delivers classroom-ready teachers the first day. So if you were to hire one of the residents that you brought on, they've been two years in your school community. They've sat through parent conferences, they've participated, they've done all kinds of the extra pieces within your school community. They know, they know the kids, they know the faculty, they know the climate, and more importantly, they know your academic programs and they know your academic priorities, because the principal has been able to shape their learning experience within the building where they are. We currently, as part of the grant, have data points, we've established targets, and we're doing a mixed methods research study. We monitor in partnership with, of course, the college, the development, application, and practice of the resident's growth. And what are we finding? So, one of the things we do is we have surveyed parents in the fall and in the spring, and as you can see in the fall, they're kind of all over the place. They're not really sure about the residency program, don't really know about it. By the spring, they strongly believe that it's benefited their child. We also asked them if it's helped with their child's academics, or been a positive impact on student learning. As you can see, in the fall, it's kind of all over, and in the spring, again, it solidly moves to extremely and very much. Finally, we asked them if we thought it should continue, if their district should continue to invest in this model, and in the fall, there's some unsureness, in the spring, not so much. I'll give you a minute to read some of the comments that actually came off actual surveys. And of course, I'll say that parents obviously are a part of our tax base, and so it's really important that as taxpayers and people who are directly involved with the periphery of this program, that they feel it's a positive investment. So we talked about that. Oh, gotta love this. One of your teachers who's on the sixth-grade team, who is leading with resident Brad Clark, who is here tonight as well, Brad, do you want to give him a wave? Brad is with the sixth-grade team, and this was Scott's reaction when I asked him for a comment. He also sent a very nice letter to the superintendent. I apologize, I should have struck out Brad's name. So, we're producing classroom-ready novices. We also are doing a norm and norm reference in the term statistically would probably be validated, tripod survey, which is a survey that actually the students fill out about the resident, and it's their perception of the resident. We also do that in the fall and in the spring. So, one of the interesting things we looked at this year was the resident's growth from being a first-year resident to a second-year resident. So those are the scores that are there from fall to fall, and you can see that all of our second-year residents grew considerably. What's really interesting is the national average, tripod doesn't survey candidates typically, they survey teachers of record, of all levels of experience, and the national average for those teachers who are actually teachers and certified in teaching is 303 points, and our residents started at that level and have greatly exceeded that in the second fall. So we're pretty proud of them. The other thing that's a little bit different is that teacher preparation has very much traditionally lived in the higher education world, and they've owned it. And so as part of this partnership, we've really developed a shared governance. We're the people that are consuming these new teachers, and so we need to be as committed to growing them as we can, and we also want to be part of the conversation about what we need. We want the higher ed to be responsive to those needs, and they've been wonderful in that regard. So we can target specific certification areas. I have, Cambridge Central School is one of our schools in the residency, and in three years, they're going to have about 15 elementary teacher retirements, and so he's looking very much next year for me to recruit elementary teacher residents for Cambridge so that hopefully they'll be able to keep them right in the pipeline and keep them on staff. So, another thing is that we do a lot of learning and changing. This is a brand-new program, so we've been pretty responsive across the board. When we recognize that there needs to be a change, we make it. So for example, in Cambridge, we have a sixth-grade resident, she's with the ELA teacher, and 100 sixth-grade students rotate through her class every day, and she does the ELA with the ELA teacher. In Beakman Town, we had another request, and that was the sixth-grade team wanted to share one resident, and we hadn't used that model before, and we said, "You know what? That sounds like a pretty decent model. Let's give it a try." And so Brad is with the sixth-grade team, he gets to see all four teachers teach, which is a pretty rich and valuable thing, especially since he's seen them interact differently with the same kids, right? Because it's all based on the relationships we build and the style that we use. So he's having an extremely rich experience, but we didn't want to force Beakman Town to do it our way, we wanted to be responsive to the ideas and needs of the district. So what are you getting back when you invest in this? The residency placement actually costs between the resident, the attending teacher stipend, and the building leader stipend, and, you know, FICA and all those like other pieces, about $31,000 a year per placement. And so what do you get back? It gives the district two years to see this person through two full growth cycles, which results in more informed hiring decisions, and if the person matches and they stay and you hire them because you thought they were good, it's more likely they'll be retained because they already have had two years in the school community and know it, so they're not coming in cold. Some of our local superintendents report that often they avoid hiring brand-new teachers because they don't feel that they're classroom-ready, and that this group is classroom-ready. So one of the superintendents pointed out that he's really going to get to hire somebody with two years' experience at the first step of pay, so it's going to be a continual savings over the person being in the district. Building leaders, as I said, get to shape the candidate's learning. And the other thing is, is that all of our lead teachers or attending teachers have reported that this has improved their instructional practice. By talking through their professional decision-making every day with a teacher candidate, it's improved their own practice, and that's something that's going to stay with them when the resident has gone on and impact them for the rest of their career. It really does build very reflective practitioners, because you have to have that conversation all the time and think about why you're doing what you're doing. The other thing that we found is that during the first year of the residency, the resident, once they're able and competent, can start subbing for their attending teacher. Well, that's great, because that's, subbing is always an issue in every district, and so Brad has been able to step in on several occasions, sometimes planned, sometimes unexpected, which of course saves the district money, but not only money, it provides a continuity to the kid's education that's amazing. The teachers say to me, "It's like having a little mini-me, like I don't have to worry about three hours of subplans that might not get delivered." They know exactly where I am, and they deliver it just like I would want them to, and the kids just continue learning as if I was there. So, how do we make that $31,000 sustainable? Because that's a pretty big chunk of money to put out for an individual year after year. So what we did was we bundled the costs, those $31,000 of costs, into a BOSI's contract for shared services. And so Brad is actually hired by BOSI's and paid by BOSI's, and Beakman Town is billed for that. And so it gets their, your level of BOSI's aid next year, which if you reinvest back in the program, it cuts the cost way down. So what does it specifically look like for you? And trust me, I have this on handouts for you, so you can like spend some time looking at it. I know I'm like going through it quickly. And I'm definitely a paper person. Uh, and I'm definitely a paper person.
It's just, just for clarity, it's on the board portal.
Oh, okay.
I gave it out.
Oh, perfect. Um, so I actually, um, Superintendent Mannix was wonderful. He sent me your actual BOSI's number, so it could be as, as close to accurate as possible. Um, so this first year, um, the NEA grant is offsetting forty percent of your cost. And next year, it will offset twenty percent of your cost because you entered later than the other, um, districts. This year in the other districts, they're only getting thirty percent, and next year they'll only get ten. But we wanted to kind of balance it out because you were only gonna be in the funding for two years. What that does is it allows you to step in, and I'll tell you a secret. Um, because the NEA money is private grant money, it's not state money, it's not federal money, and don't worry, this is all legal, I promise. Um, they, they checked with all the lawyers. Um, it goes right into Cambridge Central School, who's our fiscal agent, their general fund. So you actually get aid on a hundred percent of that cost. It's not like other things where the grant money comes off and then you get aid only on the lesser amount. You actually get aid, because it's private money, on the whole amount, which helps, uh, helps you step in. Basically, if you went, after grant money was all gone, if you were to grow the program to three residents in this district, and these are all imaginary numbers, uh, it would cost the district ninety-two thousand, one hundred and forty-eight dollars. And your annual cost, if you were reinvesting the BOSI's money in that, would be thirty-five thousand dollars, eight hundred and forty-six dollars. Um, so then, so which is about eleven, twelve thousand dollars per resident. And if you break that out into an hourly rate, it's about eight dollars and forty cents an hour. To have a resident in a classroom with a teacher, extra pair of hands, extra learner. Um, then, what's really cool about this one is, then if you start subtracting the substitute costs and savings that you're making, because during the second year of the program, after Brad finishes in December, he'll do the EDTPA, then he'll go into an alternate placement at a different grade level for six weeks. When he comes back to sixth grade, and he's been told he's passed the EDTPA, which of course he will, uh, he can sub for two days a week for the district in his certification area. So not just the sixth grade, but grades one through six. Um, that's forty days. So if we add that forty days, plus the days that they can do for their own attending teacher, you start to see some real cost savings. And in Beakman Town, that would reduce the hourly rate to six dollars and eighteen cents an hour by the time you're done. So if, districts are finding that it really is a very solid investment for their future, for grooming future teachers, uh, for the continuity and for, um, their stu, the benefits of their student learning. I'll take a breath. Do you have any questions? Yeah, sure.
Can you refer to it, um, one through six? Are you just talking about a specific person, or are you talking about that's the only?
No, right now Brad is going for certification in childhood grades one through six. So he could sub in that certification area. So in this building, it would be two different buildings, right? Elementary or middle school?
Right.
Right? Um, but he could be used as a sub for two days a week in either of those, in any of those grade levels.
So if he was, um, going for, we'll say, birth through twelve, he could cert, he could sub anywhere up to the high school?
Yes.
Okay, not that he was doing that, but I expect.
No, but there's a, so New York City's weird now. And kindergarten and pre-kindergarten are a different certification. It's like pre-K through grade two.
Birth through two, yeah.
And then one through six.
Okay.
And then seven through twelve.
Okay.
So if you had a high school resident in math, and their, their lead teacher taught algebra, when they were able to do the subbing, they could sub anywhere in seven through twelve math. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I just wanted, yeah. Hello, again, Brad Clark. Somebody looked in, oh, he looks pretty old to be going to teaching, so just some quick background.
You were lucky.
Yeah, I'm forty-one years old and made a career change last year. Uh, previously, I worked for the local Regional Development Authority, I was in Lake Placid for eighteen years, running the sports development department. Basically, getting youth involved with sports, actually worked with, uh, many Beakman Town elementary school teachers, coordinating field trips, uh, curriculums, involved around our World Cup events. Um, I live in Peru and my family, I've got two boys, they're in third and fifth grade. So my work schedule got, got pretty crazy, doing a lot of events in New York City, working on the weekends, and, you know, being a parent, that was my number-one job. Um, you know, I was losing out on a lot of big things. I'd always, teaching had always been in the back of, in the back of my mind. So when I looked into getting my master's in education and, uh, meeting with, with Sarah, I got an email about this residency program. However, it was just down in the Hudson Falls area. So with conversations with Colleen, I said, "This sounds like an unbelievable program, even though I'm not making a lot of money." The experience is, is unbelievable. What's the possibility of something like this happening up here in the North Country?" And here we are. And from my experience so far here at Beakman Town, it's been, it's been unbelievable. Um, you know, not only the, that day-to-day hands-on experience I'm getting in all the classrooms, uh, as I mentioned, I, I'm working with every sixth grader in science, ELA, social, um, you know, co-integrated classrooms. And the one, my last point, the key point I like, I, I take one classroom, Plattsburg State, uh, every five weeks online, and it coincides with, I'm actually taking an inclusion class right now with, with Sarah Hackett. And it's, it's great. What we're reading about and doing in our class, I, I come, I come here to work the next day and I'm, I'm seeing it for a kid. And you can bounce ideas off of the teachers' chat. And so it's been, it's an unbelievable experience, so just wanted to make that point.
Thank you, Brad.
Yep.
Is there any other questions?
I have a comment.
Yeah.
Um, I have a sixth grader who Brad knows. And, um, so I've talked to some of the teachers, Mr. Vella, Mr. Lozier, who said they really enjoy having Brad or, you know, a resident, and they look forward to continuing this program. Um, and I can tell you, I work in medicine, and when I have a student, um, it makes me better. And I think these guys are saying the same thing. Because it makes me think about what I'm doing, how I'm presenting myself. And, you know, I tend to just work, but when you have somebody who's there trying to learn from you, you can be a teacher for a long time and you can still learn. They ask you questions and you reprocess them. Oh, yeah. You know, so I, it sounds like a great program to me. And from the teacher's perspective, if anybody's wondering, does that slow them down? Does that, you know, interfere with their teaching? I'd say it's just the opposite. It augments their, their teaching.
So just so you know, I'm gonna make a note of your name, and when we start capturing video testimonials, you're gonna be on the list. Yeah.
Could you go back to that spreadsheet?
The what?
The spreadsheet.
Sure.
I just kinda wanna point out, um, the, uh, the grant offset, we have forty percent and twenty. You know, it, it's tough to always look at these when you have the, the BOSI's return, because it really is misleading in that, in that in the first two years, it's almost a hundred percent offset. Because you get your money back the following year.
Yes.
If you take, if you take that whole, that whole BOSI's revenue and you slide it really to the left, because that's where it really applies, the first two years are almost entirely a hundred percent covered.
Correct, yeah.
So I just kinda wanna make sure everybody sees that that's the.
So I'm sorry, could you say that again?
The BOSI's revenue line?
Yeah.
In reality, if you were to look at it on a, on the cost of the actual experience?
Yeah.
If you slide the whole thing to the left, it, it's really covered, the first year is almost a hundred percent.
Right.
Because that, because that revenue that you get on the second year really is for the first year.
Right. Which is true if you stayed at one resident, right? So our hope was that you might grow to a second resident, so that revenue would, if you invested it back in, it would basically cut the cost of having two the second year.
So it all depends on how you look at it.
Right.
So what, what, the district's goal is, and it's one of the reasons why you're here today, is that, um, we've had great success and we expand the program. And we've actually looked at, um, other grants that are very similar, um, to the Department of Education, that I think Plattsburg might be running. And not to have competing, we don't look at it as competing, we look at it as opportunities to, to take, uh, teachers or aspiring teachers into this rich pro, rich program, and they will mirror each other. It's only gonna benefit our teachers and our kids, even though there's gonna be two different, hopefully, two different grants. I don't think people are gonna care which grant you're in. Hopefully, they're gonna, they're gonna enjoy the, all the new, uh, teachers in a residency-rich program. So that's a little, Plattsburg is, I think the Plattsburg is applying for one more.
The bank stream?
Bank stream grants, yeah.
Are they applying again? They, they didn't get the original seed grant, so they may be applying again.
I think, yeah, I think they're, yeah, I think they're, they got asked to go back and be knocked on our door. So hopefully, if it doesn't work out with Plattsburg, we're still super happy where we are.
Yeah. And we're happy to, to grow it and with you any way that we can. And, uh, like I said, the good news is, as the grant money dwindles and diminishes and goes away, uh, we're lucky that the BOSI's revenue stream is a very solid, uh, state, part of state aid that isn't gonna just go away.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you very much.
So you not, you don't need handouts?
Unless the audience wants a handout, the board has them.
Okay.
All right, moving on, we will do reports. We're starting with, um, superintendent of schools, Daniel Metz.
Okay, so I'm just gonna move really to the budget process, and we're starting to see some numbers starting to come out from the Board of Agents, uh, of, uh, business officials. It seems like they, they're always pretty aggressive with what their ask is, and they're asking for two-point-one billion dollars. And that's a number we've seen before, and I think last year, by the time it was all said and done, the increase was right around one billion dollars, give or take, um, point one on that. So that's an interesting number, two-point-one billion. The federal, where we are with federal, we don't really receive any federal aid, so to speak, but we do receive federal grants, and we're just anticipating that those federal grants stay the same this year. Uh, last year, we did have a slight boost in that Title IV grant, um, and most of our other grants stayed the same. Our health insurance increase, um, still not out of the woods with health insurance. Last year was about a twenty-three or, I think it was twenty-three percent increase on health insurance. And this year, it looks like it's gonna be another ten percent increase on that. That's what we're budgeting right now. Good news on the retirement front, the retirement, um, contribution that's required, it's mandated, um, it's actually written into the constitution, the New York State Constitution. And this year, uh, oh, that, that dollar amount is based on a five-year return on the stock market. And this year, um, one of our retirement, we have two main retirement contributions. One is the teacher retirement system, and the other is the employee retirement system. So if you're not a teacher certificated, a teacher administrator, you're in the other one. And one of those two actually is gonna go down slightly, so maybe that'll be a wash. We'll, we'll see, uh, what that looks like in the very near future. So we're hoping that our tax cap comes in somewhere around two-point-five, three-point-oh, maybe in February, we're gonna have that rough number. But if you guys remember, every year, that kinda changes from meeting to meeting, just based on different numbers that come in. And different, and then we also, how you allocate you a couple of different, um, contributions for our, um, billing aid and whatnot. But right now, based on what we're expecting and the high rate of health insurance, we're looking at, um, no new positions in case we, if we have a windfall, if they, if the state says, uh, and the, and the governor's against this, but the state says, "Let's run the foundation aid formula." A lot of school districts in the area would be, would be hurt because they're overfunded. We actually would receive a boost. So if we, if they even help those groups harmless and gave us our, our boost, that could be a nice, um, a nice addition, where we could be looking at a couple of different, um, unique, uh, program opportunities. And we will have more information, because it looks like Jen Parlone is going to hopefully start on the twenty-eighth, which will give us a long-awaited full-time business official. So that's basically just an update where we are. We're, we're more right now in wait-and-see mode. We've talked to the administrative team about the process, where we are, uh, nothing really new here for them, okay? And now I'm just gonna leave, other than that, on the reports over the vacation, we had a couple of issues, um, somewhat serious issues. I was super happy with the administrative team to just, uh, really jump on these, um, some, one of them was exceptionally sensitive issue, and, um, motivate everybody else in the, in our school community to come together and help our students. As you, most of you know, we had a death, and I was super happy with the way our counselors, our administrators, uh, everybody came together, um, to help all of our kids. So that was great. And then we ended up sending emails out to some other administrators to deal with a couple other, um, concerns that were out there, I guess. And it was nice to have everybody so responsive, especially over a time when you dedicate so much time to your family. So it's really great to have people, uh, who are always willing to help. So I want hats off to that group.
Is there any chance that Cameron forwarded an update to?
Karen?
Cameron.
No, Cameron didn't, I was expecting her.
Okay. All right, um, seeing that Cameron is not here, we're gonna move down to committee reports. Um, the committee that met.
Can I just speak on behalf of Cameron, I guess, for a second? Uh, we did have a, a meeting, Principal Bazai was in Florida, he was on a conference call, Dave Mann came in, and actually you were there with Cameron and another student. And they had some really good ideas, uh, for the district on how they could help this, help students with grief and, um, the passing of, of their friend. And, uh, you know, hats off to Cameron for, he's very eloquent and passionate, and, uh, some of those ideas are gonna move forward and be embedded into what we do here at Beakman Town. So it was, uh, you were there, it was pretty wonderful.
It was really impressive, the level of maturity was amazing.
Yeah, yeah. I'm over vacation, so that was great.
All right, um, committee reports. Audit Committee was the only, um, committee that met since our last, uh, meeting. Uh, we discussed our November eighteenth financial reports. It looks like, um, as of November, our, um, breakfast, lunch, and snack program did decrease a little bit, but that was mainly because of student absentee, um, field trips, holidays, CV tech.
Snow days.
Uh-huh.
Maybe snow days.
And snow, yeah, and a, and a snow day. Um, so we, we are anticipating that, um, that will increase again in January. Um, something that was really phenomenal is, um, both the high school and middle school increased their, um, food, um, location availability. So we have additional carts, so it makes it a lot easier on our students to, um, eat lunch and breakfast. So I think that's a win for everybody. So that was very good. Um, some of the other things we discussed were, um, uh, we had a discussion concerning E-rate reimbursements, um, from Westell Fiber Institution, which is, um, uh, an opportunity for our district to utilize some funds. So that was excellent. Uh, we also discussed, uh, splitting expense codes or distribution of expense codes through the middle school, high school library, compensate, um, absences, and audit budgeting and expenses. Um, we will be meeting again, um, to be announced, uh, somewhere near the end of January, beginning of February. That's it for Audit Committee. All right. It's resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends for the Board of Education to approve the following minutes. May I have a motion brief?
Motion.
Thank you, Mark. Second?
Second.
Any discussion or questions?
Yeah, in regards to the, um, executive session, there were certain items that weren't on the minutes, um, that were discussed in the executive session, and I don't think they were proposed before we went into executive session specifically, without going into detail, state ed and, um, a non-resident and non-staff number.
Um, actually, we are not going to be talking about those things in the executive session? Um, so?
Last, last, last month.
We're in approval of the minutes. I want you, maybe not. Just on the flash.
Okay. Um, any other questions or discussion? Oh, sorry.
I will ask. Um, it's a good point to review the minutes, uh, just, just for, uh, plan and, and figuring the process. Next time, can we, we get some emails, we respond to, any corrections? That'd be great. That'd be great.
Hi, Dave. I sent an email on whether or not we were properly in executive session. We spoke about those two issues.
Right, but I'll just specific so you can correct the minutes ahead of that. Okay, thanks.
All right. Are we all in favor?
Aye.
No, abstains? We have Andy abstains. Resolution passes. It's resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education to approve the CSE, CPSE, and 504 recommendations dated 1/08/2019. I have a hard time with that. All right. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Andy, second?
Second.
Jeremy, any discussion or question? All in favor?
Aye.
No, abstains? Resolution passes. It's resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following personnel resolutions on this consent agenda, resignations, appointments, terminations be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
And then, second?
Second.
Mark, any discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
No, abstains? Resolution passes. It's resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following miscellaneous resolutions on this consent agenda, employment agreement between the Beaventown Central School District and Zephyr Brusso as per diem nurse, and the employment agreement with General Parliament Business Manager of Schools.
Correct.
Be and are hereby approved. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Mike, second?
I'll say it.
Holden, any discussion or questions?
The, does that include this agenda?
It's a resignation.
That's a personnel.
It tells before, it tells before.
It says eat.
Yeah.
That's it. Let's see how we do this.
Yeah, it's personnel, eat.
He's in there.
Resignations and employment.
Yes, just wanna make sure they're included.
It didn't include that.
Yeah. All right, so that was our, any other discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
No, abstains?
Abstained.
Andy with abstains? Resolution passes. It's resolved that the superintendent of schools recommends to the Board of Education that the following resolution on this consent agenda, financial reports and transfers be and are hereby approved. May I have a roll call vote, please?
Motion?
Oops, sorry, motion? Motion?
All motion.
Second?
Second.
Mike and Mark? Discussion? Questions? Roll call vote, please.
Douglas Beatty, Andrew Brockway?
Yes.
Kathy Buckling?
Yes.
Jeremy Connors?
Yes.
Michael Haggardorn?
Yes.
Holden Lehman?
Yes.
Ed Maron?
Yes.
Mark San?
Yes.
Pauline Stone? Pauline? Pauline, yes or no, or abstain?
She looks frozen.
Is she frozen?
Derek, can you check?
Work last time.
Seemed to be making a lot of noise before the vote.
Exactly.
Yeah, she's frozen, I hope.
That's, that's good. You're a loser.
I have to send you down to Florida, Mike.
All right, can we say resolution passes or can they?
Yeah, now they're back.
Okay. All right. Resolution passes.
Welcome.
All right, do we have any additional items to discuss?
I just wanted to say that after I requested the attorney billing for Ross Pettelli and the government for Lazzo firm, that we've spent approximately $30,000 on the investigation started by the board president. I think the public should know about that.
Actually, it's probably going to increase with the litigation. And that was a full board decision, not just me.
There's no bullet taken on that?
I know. All right. Is there anything else? Do you want to have that Jen, her moment starting?
No, it's just right there.
Okay. All right, we have set aside 10 minutes for public comment. If anyone would like to address the board at this time.
Can I tee this up for you? Like to speak wherever. Can I talk about the water?
Yes. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Sam Dyer. I reside at 227 Duke at Rose in town of Beaventown. I am currently the supervisor of the town. I've got a couple of my board members here. Hopefully, there's more than moral support here.
Sam, can I just, just for, just for a second? So Sam called me, I'm gonna say three weeks ago or so, something like that. I did send out, either put in an update or sent out an email, can't remember which one to the board. I know our phone call got cut short, but he was requesting, we have eight community members down the road, I guess, near the river, that have water issues. And requesting to potentially maybe use our well water here to help them. And then we kind of, so we'd have to talk later because some, there's a phone call.
Well, I, I spoke to Mr. Noonan beforehand, then I, then I talked to you.
Yeah.
And, you know, I guess I'm looking for some relief for the homeowners that are affected right now. We are applying for a grant. We did get turned down in the first round of funding. And that's why, you know, it's, it's twofold. Even if we do get the grant, we're looking at a couple of years of service work before we can tie these people on. We are supplying with bottled water right now. Some of these homeowners cannot even bathe in the water that they have because of the salt. I mean, we've, we've put the salt storage facility up, but I think there's, there's more than, than one avenue to pursue here. I've been working with DEC. We have, we have a plan that we're trying to implement, but, you know, it's the same old thing. You know, with no money, we cannot provide the service that, that we need to do here. You know, I've, as a, as a recent and a, and an old town board member, we've always worked hand-in-hand with the school. You know, the athletic fields are yours to use. We've pumped fuel for you for years for the buses. And this thing, you know, I know you can't give me an answer tonight, but I, I just wanna give you a heads up. This has been going on for a couple of years. And, and when I came on in January, Terry can attest to this, we're gonna have two years of monitoring this situation to see if it's gotten any worse or any better.
Did you put some of those monitors over in our field area?
Yep, there's, there's monitors in the, in the back because we've, we've tried to look at the whole area. Because if there's a problem that occurs, we, we wanna be spot on. But what we found with some of the monitoring, it's not all from the town of Beaventown. You know, I've, I'm under the impression that we've, we've done some other areas and there's some issues along Route 22, which is the state of New York DOT. And we met with DEC. And of course, DEC, you know, it's, it's not my ball, it's DOT. So I do have another meeting with DOT, but I'm, I'm not trying to pass the blame. I'm trying to bring everybody to the table to work together. You know, we have a job to do. And let's face it, if it was somebody in this room that their water was affected, I think they'd be hollering and screaming, and they'd have every right to. But I think the, the whole thing here is, it's not a lot of water. I'm willing, and I, and I think I've got the support of my board, to pay for whatever testing has to be done to your wells to make sure that the water can be provided without affecting the school and the water that's already being used. You know, if it comes to chlorination or pumps, we will pay whatever we have to pay. It's, it's not a matter of money. It's, it's, you know, and I don't know, I know you're gonna have to discuss it, but I would like to have an answer as, as soon as possible because I, I've worked, you know, I've talked to the county health department, and I don't wanna bring everybody on board and, and have, you know, the, the board say no. They don't wanna pursue this avenue. I think we need to do something as soon as we can. And, and I'm looking at, you know, using this source of water until we, we have our own source up and running. And, and let's face it, it's, I can tell you right now, it's gonna be a couple of years. I'm not gonna, you know, blow smoke and say it may be a year and a half or something. It may be longer. But in talking with, with Mr. Noonan, apparently the water is not an issue, you know. But all that testing has to be done to make sure there is plenty of water.
Right.
And, and the one good thing, if we can come to some sort of, of an agreement, it's gonna be summer before we can get hooked up and, and done. That's at the dry time, and that's when you guys are using the least amount of water that you, that you need in the schools on session, or the kids aren't here, and stuff like that. But, you know, I, I just, I'm, I'm here to, to let you know what's going on. And Mr. Metz, thank you. He answered your phone, he started the process. Well, it's, it's hard, you know, everybody's busy, we've all got things to do. And, you know, I'm, I'm pulling my hair out trying to, to find some sort of Band-Aid for now. Not, not a solution, just, just try to provide the normal things. We've got a couple of people that have been drawing water on their own just so they can. And, and if we get more rain, you know, it's, it flushes itself somewhat, and it's gonna take time. You know, but, but we're trying to plan for the future. And if there's a problem down the road with, with other wells, you know, we, we have to accommodate that. So.
Do you, do you anticipate that? Do you anticipate the number growing?
Well, the problem is, the more I've looked into this, there's one that didn't come to us until a couple, a couple of years ago. And he'd been having problems since 2009. This, my first day as a legislator in Beaventown, it was the, was the mess in Shazie Lake. And it took DOT six years to take care of that. And, and they knew where the source was. But this isn't anything new. This is happening all over New York State and probably all over the country. You know, we've found something that works to keep the roads clean, but it's not good for the environment. And, and salt is, you know, as you know, it's, it's, it's not good. But, you know, I, I hate to drop the ball. Is there a timeline or a timeframe where I could get some sort of answer?
No, for.
And I'm not looking for one tonight, I understand that.
No, well, I'm glad you're here because I know we needed to have this, actually. And we hadn't connected, so. One of the things, the only thing I, it's not the only thing. The first thing that I think of is getting that assurance that Dan's right. Normally, he's always right. But getting assurance that we have enough well water. I'm not sure what else the board thinks of when they think of the request. We have eight, I think it's eight homes right now.
There's, there's eight homes, actually, there's, there's 10 homes that are affected. Two of them, we've provided enough water to so that they, they, some come on, some go off. Some are single-family homes. And let me give you some idea of the amount of water that's gotta be used. We're talking about 110 gallons a day, which, I don't know if it sounds like a lot to you, that's, that's not a lot of water. Kevin Sponable, who had four people at home, was drawing 150 gallons of water a day. So, you know, we're talking a little over 1,000 gallons, maybe 1,500 gallons of water a day. And that's, that's at the, at, at the peak, you know. But I, but like you said, the, the wells would have to be tested, you know. I understand that. We've been working with Wayne Ryan from AES. Got a book this high of, of facts and figures, I can, you know, provide it to anybody. You know, I think we've, as far as the, the town, you know, I, I thought, like I said, I was, I was under the impression that we're gonna have two years of monitoring. And I think I started to tell you, DEC in February of last year said that they wanted a plan ready to implement, you know, in, in, in May. And, and there wasn't enough time, but we did submit our plan in August. They didn't give enough time to get that done. But the problem I found is, and, and you can attest to this, you know, they, they put the, they put the restraints on you. Then when you do them, you know, it sits on somebody's desk. You know, and, and this is the time of year where, yes, there's a little bit of frost in the ground, but this is a time where we can get things done, you know. So that when the weather breaks, we can, we can do what we have to do.
And just so, I, I think you made a really good point about our partnerships in the past. I know we have some new board members and new administrators, but we have always worked together because when there's a need, and whether it's, you know, the sport, the sport field has been great, but busing, youth commission, you're right about the gas. When our pumps broke down for years, we were going over there and been a, been a pain in your butt. Not your, you know, but then, but then we said, hey, give us two more years because we're gonna put some gas tanks in. You guys were like, fine. So it has been a true partnership.
And, and it should be, because I look around this table, we're, you know, whether it's, whether it's school, county, we're county. We're, we're all paying the same bill, and we're, we're all the same people.
And Mike Haggardorn, you'll remember that the town of Beaventown really helped us with the natural gas in Perkamont Head with, who was, one of your board members of the town?
Mike Morales.
Mike Morales.
Yes, you know, and that was, when I was legislator, I asked Mike to, to work on that because Shazie was having the same issues. And we haven't solved Drew Poultrie's problem yet, but we're, but we're working on that. But I, but I think that's, that's what it takes. You know, the discussion here starts tonight. Hopefully, we can move forward. And, you know, one thing you'll find with me is, I'm, I'm not afraid to make a phone call or ask a question. And, and if you tell me it's gonna be a couple of weeks, in two weeks, the phone's gonna ring. You know, I just, you know, if there's any question anytime, Andrew, you know me, you know. This has been, you know, a, a problem that's, that's gotta be faced. And, and I think working with DOT, you know, they're another one that, that doesn't wanna accept any blame, you know. So I just feel that, you know, if we get everybody to the table, and, and the board of health thought this was a great move to come to you, to, to ask you this because of the source of water. Go ahead.
Sam, did you check on the liability issues for the town and the school? Like if we were to provide water for you or?
The health, well, that's where I started. You know, I, I'm gonna work through this with DEC, but, but I guess tonight, can I, I'm, I'm gonna ask you, can I continue my conversations with, with the other entities involved? Or, or is this something that you don't wanna look into? I guess that's.
I think we can give more, we should receive more information. I think everybody would be interested in that.
And, and I guess if you give me a contact person, you know, I've got a lady right here that's very good with the, with the emails and computer. And that's the quickest way to move stuff around, I'll, I'll, I'll admit. You know, that's, that's not my forte. But I, I do wanna make sure that you have every question answered. And, and don't be afraid to ask, you know. We're all in the same boat here. And I just, I just wanna move forward because, to be honest with you, I would like to have water in these houses this summer. And, and I, I really think it's doable with, with this board's health. That's the only way it can happen. Cheryl, Terry, do you wanna add anything?
Ah, it's long overdue. Their, their dishwashers, they're replacing them every two to three years. It's rusting out all their elements.
The water pipes.
The water pipes. I mean, you know, as, I'm sure these guys will sleep over this, to think that this, these eight families don't have drinkable water in their homes. It's just.
And it's, you know, it's, it's easy to provide them with drinking water, but, you know, you don't wanna bathe in something you can't drink.
Exactly.
And you shouldn't have to.
You know, their appliances.
And they're all right in a, in a small area. You know, there's a couple on Ashley Road, which are right through the, what I call the old cow pasture down here, but they're along the Haynes Road and.
Have you guys, have you guys ever spoken to when DEC discusses this issue with you about the fracking issue that occurred on western Pennsylvania? And how they used water buffaloes with reverse osmosis systems that with a three-inch line can actually do up to three or four houses at a time?
Well, and that's, and that's what we, we had talked, I had John Canosa, and I've taken up too much of your time, but I'll educate anybody. John Canosa and I had worked hand-in-hand, because I was working on this before I stepped into this position. And we talked about a double-paced well, okay? And at the house that I was, that I was telling you about, I won't raise anybody's names, but they, they did this, and it worked for about six years. And I said, well, I do not wanna dump $50,000 in a well and have it last six years. You know, we just, I was, in the back of my mind, I figured we could win and drill these people new wells because there is some good water in those places. But the problem with salt, you know, it's the same old thing, you know. It's, it's dense and it's heavier. So if, if you're already in a deep well and you've got a problem, salt travels. And it's, and it's gonna find that aquifer to, to where it can get to it. And, and I do not, you know, that's, that was one of the things. We talked about, you know, the, the reverse osmosis at, at these houses. And, and that's, that's a Band-Aid. And then the septic system can't handle the water that you're dumping on that lot. So we've, I can tell you, I can write a book. You know, we've, we've tried every.
Is it coming from the road, salt?
Yeah. Yes, yeah, what, what happened, that was, it was the way it was contained, you know, it was, it had run into the brook, is what had happened. It was surface water that was run off. But, you know, that's, we've contained the problem. Our, our numbers are coming down on the, at the brook. We have less salt. at the brook, we have less salt at our discharge than we do north of the city or north of the town, and that's why I brought DOT, or trying to bring DOT in because they've got a bigger problem than we have now. And we've done our due diligence, we've done what we can to contain the problem, and now we're trying to, you know, create a solution to take care of the water for those deep.
Why don't you call me on Friday and we'll try to, we'll see what resources you have and see if we can share some resources and see how we can provide these folks with some information. Well, you got to go through hers, so.
I'll find a way.
Sam, if they were to ask me for a legal opinion on how can we do this, my question would be, is your proposal basically that the town would like to access the well currently existing for the school building and take, come on the property, build something to take water to those eight houses?
All, all we need is a place to tap onto the line. We will dig it, we will put it down below frost, and I'm telling you that we will incur any cost that the school wants us to. I don't care if we have to add more chlorine to your, your system or, you know, if a pump goes down, you know, and we've got to eat half the cost or something, you know, I'm, that's trivial, you know? We're looking at a six and a half million dollar project and we're trying to get three to three and a half million dollars to help with it. So if we can do this, and I don't want those people to have to wait two years for this, you know, it's just, it's time, you know? And if I've got to come back next month, Dan, and speak to you again, I will. I just, I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page, and if there's any question, Jackie, Joe Laberando is our attorney, and, you know, there's, between the engineers, the health department, and I haven't found anybody, you know, I've got to talk to DEC, but I haven't found anybody that doesn't think that this is a good solution for the part-time, you know, in the interim, to get this done.
Question, Jackie, is there, I mean, I think we should try to help communities as much as we can, obviously. We're in this together, is there, is there, or could you find out if there's any, are there any state limitations that limits what a school district can do?
Of course there's state limitations. But there's also vehicles that I'm already thinking of that could work.
That's the part I really want to anticipate, unless, and/or, maybe we could also work on creating some sort of educational component around this with students and the staff, you know?
Well, I've already, I've written down, I got a note that I think could be a legal vehicle, but I, and I also know of another school district where the town takes water off of their property, they have their own well on the property, and that's a whole different set of agreements. So I'm sure that, that's why I wanted to know what the idea was, so that I could figure out a vehicle that would work.
And, you know, I, like I said, I'll work with anybody, I'll do whatever I've got to do. And if you, you know, I know Jackie, but whoever wants to be the contact person, let me know and we will do everything we can to speed the process as much as we can. Any other questions? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Seeing that concludes public comment.
Excuse me, I, we had a 10-minute limit.
We might have over your 10 minutes.
I know, but you went over your 10 minutes with that, so I couldn't do something.
Yes, but we have set aside two different 10-minute comments.
Well, I didn't expect that at the end.
I understand that.
I think we should let her speak before you went on.
Excuse me, but we've exceeded our 10 minutes and we need to keep our meeting on time. And we also have an executive session after this, so.
So what?
We will have to, you are welcome to come back at our next meeting.
I don't want to wait till the next meeting, I'll have to answer now or send out?
It'll be a brief statement, a brief one-minute statement?
I understand that.
And you will stop Mr. Dyer at 10 minutes, which I don't think you should have. So I just...
Okay. This discussion, this discussion's over, our public comment is 10 minutes, and we've already exceeded our 10 minutes.
For the record, I just want to say...
So it's resolved that the Board of Education appoint a clerk pro temp for executive session?
Let me just give, let me just confirm Jackie's kind of question. I think it's inappropriate that we...
Okay, we're done.
I can make a comment. I can make a comment.
Let's, let's like, find out what Mr. made.
You didn't stop at 10 minutes, these people have been waiting here all night. It's inappropriate.
All right. It's resolved that the Board of Education appoint a person as clerk pro temp for this meeting. Any volunteers?
May I discuss whether we're doing an executive session?
Yeah, I know. If you look at your agenda, we're doing this one, and then I will read the resolution for executive session. All right, clerk pro temp? How about you, Mike? You can do it. May I have a motion that Mr. Hagedorn is our clerk pro temp?
Motion.
Thank you, Mark, second?
Second.
Thank you, Holden. Any questions or discussion concerning a clerk pro temp?
My, point of order, which takes precedence over this motion, point of order, Pauline is not on the video conference still, it's 7:40.
People are allowed to leave the meeting early.
Are you going to make note of it?
We, we always do our best to write down any, what time a person enters and leaves a meeting.
What time did she leave? Can we get back to the task here?
Thank you.
Holden, I'm not... Stop interrupting.
Holden, don't speak to me.
I'm here for the kids, okay? I'm here to do a good job for the community, and you continually interrupt and make this look like a big clown circus.
So we're going to...
Listen, wait that voting, sorry, after the meeting.
Excuse me. We're going to get back to clerk pro temp.
Thank you.
May I have a, all in favor, please?
Aye.
Noes, abstains, resolution passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's resolved that the Board of Education enter executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person or persons. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Thank you. Second? Mike? All right, all in favor, please?
Aye.
Noes, abstains?